Good evening.
Good evening.
Today is February the twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. Our thoughtful today is "Well Done Is Better Than Well Said." That's by Benjamin Franklin. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Mason if he would lead us in our invocation and our pledge tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let us all bow our heads. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us back to this place one more time. God, we thank you for all that you've done for us and all that you are about to do. God, we just ask that as we move forward and do the county business, God, that you would be with us, go before us, go behind us, God. God, lead us and guide us and direct us into all truth, God. Now, we even ask that you continue to allow this board to make the best decisions for this amazing community, God, so that we may elevate and go to the next level and that this community may be all that you have called and desired for it to be. So we ask that you renew our hearts, renew our minds, renew our spirits, uh, so that we may be the leaders that you have called each and every one of us to be. God, we even ask that you touch everyone under the sound of our voice, God, where there'll be nothing missing, nothing lacking, that they will have everything that they need. And God, we thank you, we bless you, we praise you, and we give you all the kingdom honor and the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I seek a motion that we adopt the agenda, please.
So moved.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Next is citizens' comments. This opportunity that we allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. If you would come at this time, please, ma'am, sir, please state your name and address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. May come at this time. Please, ma'am, please, sir, state your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so.
Good evening, Commissioners. We're gonna be talking about the ARPA fund money today. So I ask that the ARPA fund money be transparent. We want to have those funds, uh, we wanna have those funds, uh, put on the county website, how they was dispersed to the public. And if possible, we would like to also have those ARPA fund money investigated by the federal government and state government to say how this money was dispersed. My name is Terry Jackson. I'm on the Threat Nation News, and I live here in Covington. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Thank you. Next is the chairman's report. Ms. Hughes, if you would.
Thank you, Chairman Baines. Good evening, Commissioners. How y'all doing? Um, as we continue to visit community nonprofit organizations and shed light on useful resources available in Newton County, tonight you will hear from Ms. Tanya Hammons of Repairs, Repairs of the Breach, Inc., and Ms. Emily Howes of the Covington First United Methodist Church. They received forty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty thousand dollars respectively in ARPA nonprofit grant funds. Let's welcome Ms. Emily Howes to the podium. I don't see her. Tanya? Come on up. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman of the Board and Commissioners. Um, on behalf of our organization, Repairs of the Breach, we would like to say thank you for the funds that were given to us. Um, I, as I had a visit with Chairman Baines and Manager Cooper a few weeks ago. I explained to them how our organization put those funds to use. And, um, I don't know if you guys want a, um, a brief of our ministry. We've been in this community for, since nineteen ninety-one, serving the community. And since COVID, our focus has been mostly on homelessness and families who were impoverished. Um, so, right after COVID, we were able to partner with Willing Helpers Medical Clinic, and they loaned us two intern social workers who we had until May of two thousand twenty-two. Um, and when they left, and when they left, it left a big hole because we had lots of citizens who needed those services. So with the funds that, that were approved, that was one of the things that we, as a board, decided was most important, to use those funds to hire a social worker who was available uh, three days a week, to visit with, um, those who are disabled, those who are homeless, those who need assistance, um, filling out basic applications such as job applications, food stamp applications, uh, they might need transportation to the Social Security Office, whatever. So we used the majority of the funds to hire the social worker, and, um, I believe that it was very impactful to the community. Um, the other parts of the funds that we used, we used some of the funds for plumbing. We have, we have showers there daily, if you're not familiar with our services. Uh, before they opened the warming center, we were serving between thirty and forty individuals a day to, um, simply to take a shower and get clean. And so, um, the numbers are down now because now they can't go to the warming center. But, um, so we used some of the money to, um, replace some of the old plumbing in our bathroom facilities where these are used for the community to, um, have showers and get clean clothes and hygiene items. Um, we also, we were donated a van that we, um, are able to use. Um, one of our outreach, um, team members was using her own personal vehicle. We were donated a van by a church, and we used some of the money to, um, simply tune up that van and get it on the road to the, is now running safely. Um, and the rest of the money was spent for supplies, food. Um, I have a detailed list of how each dollar and dime was spent, if that's needed. But I just wanna say thank you. I don't wanna take up a lot of time. Um, I believe that the money was, um, used for the benefit of the community and those in need that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily and Repairs of the Breach, uh, for what you do for the community. And I, I mean, not Emily. Tanya, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, and I believe Emily did come in. If you would, please come on up.
Good evening, you all.
Good evening.
Um, if any of you have small children or once upon a time did, you might understand my lateness. There were a few tears when Mom had to leave close to dinnertime. But I appreciate giving, um, being given the opportunity to speak to you all. Um, as you said, my name's Emily House, and I'm the Director of Giving Hands Food Pantry. We are a nonprofit ministry of Covington First United Methodist Church, uh, here in Covington, and we currently serve approximately a thousand families each month. Um, I wanna thank the Board of Commissioners for awarding us thirty thousand dollars last year and let you know how we poured that money back into our community. Um, after operating drive-up, prepackaged food distributions due to COVID-nineteen, Giving Hands Food Pantry moved back to indoor food distributions back in March of last year. Um, that means guests now get to, um, have the option to still pick up a prepackaged box of food or to shop for their own groceries. And this new shopping option allows our guests a lot more, um, choice and dignity. It significantly decreases waste and it lowers our operating costs. Um, thanks to the Newton County Food Pantry Grant, Giving Hands Food Pantry purchased a dozen new shopping carts and that filled the shopping cart corral that was actually built and donated, um, by FFA students at Newton College and Career Academy. We also repaired our concrete sidewalk and added in, um, a new set of stairs to make loading groceries into cars, less of a challenge on our guests. Um, we use grant funds to maintain one of our most important pieces of equipment, our refrigerated box truck. This truck transports thousands of pounds of food, um, from local grocery stores back to the food pantry each week. We purchased new tires and had our food, um, food truck serviced so we can continue to transport the frozen meat, bakery, and produce, dairy, and on and on, um, items that our guests have really come to depend on. Uh, Giving Hands was also able to supplement food pantry staff salaries, purchase promotional materials, and replace a broken AC unit. Our team really gets to appreciate and feel the effects of these purchases daily, um, whether it's from keeping cool on a hot summer Georgia day and, or appreciating that our team has gotten to, um, grow from a team of two to a team of three when we added our guest coordinator, who now oversees guest appointments and guest relations. Um, and we've been able to share our mission much more effectively, um, with our community at events like the fuzz run. And lastly, with your help, we purchased approximately forty thousand pounds of food and that all went to Newton, Jasper, and Butts County residents facing food insecurity. So Giving Hands Food Pantry was able to provide each family that came to visit us between forty-five and seventy-five pounds of food at each visit with no cost to the family. So thank you again, Newton County, for your immense support for organizations like ours that are trying to ensure a better, stronger One Newton. Um, we cannot do the important work that we absolutely love doing without you guys. So thank you again.
Thank you, Emily. Um, Giving Hands and Repairs of the Breach, y'all does such a, um, amazing job, and our community say thank you so much for what you do. Um, lastly, in the chairman's report, uh, we are preparing for State of the County on March the twenty-sixth at ten, um, AM at the quarter auditorium. So we wanna invite you guys, State of the County. Um, Ms. Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, residents of the community. I come before you today with the county manager's report. My part of it will be abbreviated because I'm gonna yield the remaining time, uh, to, uh, Mr. David Irwin, partner at Malden and Jenkins, so that he can provide an overview of our financial audit report for June two thousand twenty-three. So, in terms of my report, it's simple. I wanna talk about some outstanding people, really briefly. Uh, a huge shout-out to the coaches and the teams who participated in the HBCU softball invitational this past weekend. It was a great event. I had the opportunity to partake in the welcoming, uh, part of it, as well as catch a lot of games on Saturday, and it was some great softball being played. And a special congratulations to the Lady Bysons of Howard University and Coach Tori Tyson on winning the tournament. But a really special thank you to Mr. Lennox Moody, Ms. Ellie Moody, and Ms. Shanita Edwards, the organizers of the event. We believe that this is gonna be a long-standing partnership. I've had some discussions with them, their takeaways, and what we can do to enhance this going forward next year. So I'm really excited about that opportunity and that partnership that we've established. It was a great event. Uh, the community really came out and supported, and neighboring communities really came out and supported. So kudos to Newton County in that regard. Also, from an internal perspective, kudos to Ms. Angela White Davis, our Board of Commissioners, I mean, excuse me, our Board of Elections Director. Uh, we started early voting on yesterday. On yesterday, we had a hundred and fifty early voters. And when I checked today, at approximately one fifteen for today, we had a hundred and sixteen early voters for today. So we're moving right along with our early voting process, and kudos to her and her team for making sure that the process in this early voting program is, uh, really fluid. So, when we talk about financial audits and reporting, it's simple. We're gonna take a look at our general fund revenues, our general fund expenditures, our fund balance history, and our enterprise funds. So without further ado, I would like Mr. David Irwin, partner at Malden and Jenkins, to come up and provide a presentation.
All right. Well, uh, good evening, everyone. Hope you all are doing well. Again, my name's David Irwin, and I'm with Malden Jenkins. Again, I'm the, uh, partner who oversaw this year's audit of the county's financial statements, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to, uh, to be here with you all this evening to, uh, discuss with you all the results of this year's audit. Uh, I won't take up too much of your time, but, uh, the purpose of today's presentation is to provide you all an overview of our independent auditors' report, uh, discuss the results of the two compliance reports that we issued in conjunction with the audit, hit a few of the financial statement highlights, um, discuss some information that the auditing standards require as we communicate to you all, and then, uh, obviously, uh, to, to answer any questions that you all may have. Now, the financial statements, the, themselves that have been presented to you all are the responsibility of county's management and members of the board. As your independent external auditors, um, our responsibility is to express an opinion on these statements. Uh, we conducted our audit in accordance with general accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards, and I'm happy to say that we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on this year's report. Again, this is what you want. Uh, this is the highest level of assurance we provide your external auditor. What this means is that, in our opinion, the financial statements are considered to be fairly presented in all material respects and accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Um, as part of the audit, again, there are two compliance reports that we issue, the first of which is a single audit report. Again, a single audit report is a compliance report, uh, that is required when an entity has over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal expenditures during the year. The county had around thirteen point six million dollars of federal expenditures in FY twenty-three. Um, as was the case with the, with the financial audit, we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on the single audit as well. Uh, the second compliance report is something called the Yellow Book Report, which, again, this is a report on the county's, um, internal controls and your compliance with various laws and regulations. And, uh, I'm pleased to say that we do not have any audit findings reporting you all this year, meaning we noted, uh, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the, in the county's internal controls, uh, during our audit. And, um, you know, as I mentioned to you all last year, you know, for a county your size, there's obviously a significant amount of financial activity for which you all have to account for. Um, in addition, uh, with all the new, uh, accounting standards are being implemented each year, and really just how complex the financial reporting process has become, uh, it, it makes it all the more impressive to stand here before you this evening and present to you all an audit that not only has a clean opinion, but also no audit findings. So again, that's, uh, that's certainly something you all should be proud of. And, um, to, to me, it, it really speaks volumes about the hard work done by your staff. Uh, Brittany, the entire finance department did a great job again this year. Um, they were very accommodating, our audit team had everything ready for us and, and, um, quickly answered our questions and got us everything that we needed in order to get the audit finalized by the, by the twelve thirty-one deadline. So, um, again, we certainly appreciate their hard work this year. And, um, you know, again, just, uh, thank you for their team. Thank you for your, to your team for all their hard work. Uh, now for a brief overview of your financial statements. Um, again, you all prepare what is called an annual comprehensive financial report, otherwise known as an ACFOR. Um, an ACFOR requires the inclusion of additional information that goes above and beyond the basic financial reporting requirements. Um, this document is submitted annually to the Government Finance Officer Association, um, otherwise known as GFOA, where they put it through a, a, a pretty stringent review process. Uh, not only their professional staff, they also have a special review committee, uh, that reviews the county's document. And when they, when they look at the county's ACFOR, their goal is not to assess the financial health of the county. What they wanna do is make sure that the necessary information is in this report, uh, so the readers of your financial statements can do so themselves. And through this review, the GFOA, um, has once again awarded the county the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for fiscal year twenty-two. And that, that certificate is included in this year's report. Uh, so again, congratulations to you all on that. Um, this is a very impressive document and, and ones that, uh, that you all should certainly be proud of. Uh, as you look through, uh, the report, one section I always like to point out is the Management's Discussion Analysis, otherwise known as the MDNA. Um, it's right after our audit opinion. It begins on page, uh, six. Um, I always strongly encourage everyone to read this section. Uh, the purpose of the MDNA is, is to make it easier, uh, for a broader audience to use and better understand your financial statements. And, uh, it, it does this by providing a narrative explanation of the financial statements from management's perspective. So, um, you know, i- i- if you ever have any questions about any fluctuations in financial activity, anything unique or unusual that occurred during the year, oftentimes you could find your answer within the MDNA. In addition, there's quite a bit of comparative information in this section. Um, so you're, you have financial activity for not only FY twenty-three, but also FY twenty-two in this section as well. And, uh, you know, to me, that adds a lot of value to the reader. Um, it gives you a much better understanding of the, of the current year activity, um, when, when you had the prior year numbers there for comparative purposes. So, um, uh, again, if you can, I, I would strongly encourage everyone to, to read through the MDNA. Uh, now, the county's basic financial statements are broken into three components, uh, the first of which being the government-wide statements. Uh, now, the government-wide statements, they provide a broad view of the county's operations, um, similar to, similar to what you would see in a private sector business. Um, of all the funds of the county, uh, they're combined into two columns, depending on the nature of the fund. You have, um, a column for your governmental activities, as well as a co- a separate column for your business-type activities. Um, but again, as you can see on this slide, we, we have a, a slide that summarizes the, uh, the county's financial activity from the government-wide perspective. But, uh, as you can see, uh, the county ended the year with assets and deferred outflows of resources of around four hundred sixty-five million. Um, of that amount, approximately two hundred forty-eight, uh, million are your capital assets net of accumulated appreciation. Again, capital assets, that's the land, buildings, machinery, equipment, vehicles, et cetera, that's owned by the county. Um, you all also had around a hundred sixty-three million dollars in cash investments a year end. Total liabilities around a hundred forty-four million. Um, of that amount, around a hundred five, uh, million are long-term in nature, meaning they're not due within the next fiscal year. Uh, revenues, total revenues around a hundred twenty-four point five million, uh, compared to expenses around a hundred thirty-two point eight. Uh, so this resulted in an ending net position of approximately three hundred twenty-one million, um, which is a decrease of about eight point three million for the year. But, um, you know, all in all, not a bad year for the county from any Y perspective. You know, again, while your net position, uh, did decrease, uh, the reason for that, uh, was the decrease in the net position of the Joint Development Authority, you know, for which you all have an equity interest. So, that being said, um, you know, you're looking at your balance sheet. It's, it's a strong balance sheet. It's a good-looking balance sheet, and, uh, you, you all are, are in good shape financially. And again, when I talk about net position, uh, another thing I always like to remind people, net position is not what you all have in the form of cash for discretionary spending. Uh, net position is merely the difference between assets and liabilities, only a portion of which is, is cash on hand. Uh, the second component of your financial statements are the fund-level statements. Um, again, this is what you all typically see throughout the year. Uh, this component, it focuses on individual parts of the government and reports the county's operations in more detail than that of the government-wide statements. And, uh, of all the funds that you have, if I'm in your shoes, my primary focus is on the general fund. Again, the general fund is the main operating fund of the county, and therefore it, it accounts for the majority of your revenues received and funds expended. Uh, but we have a couple of slides here, the first of which, um, breaks down the, the general fund's revenues for the year. Again, this is just the general fund. But, um, your total revenues for the general fund were around eighty-seven point six million dollars. That's about a four point one million dollar increase compared to FY twenty-two. Uh, but as you can see on this chart, um, you know, obviously, the, the vast majority of the revenue, of the general fund's revenues, um, are derived from taxes, you know, which totaled around seventy-five point two million dollars. Um, and that represented about eighty-six percent of the total revenues of the general fund. And again, taxes, that includes your property taxes, your franchise taxes, um, sales taxes, et cetera, that were collected during the year. Um, a couple of other significant sources of revenues worth mentioning. Um, you all had charges for services of just under five point six million, um, intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenue of one point six million and licenses and permits of around one and a half million dollars for the year. Uh, this next chart, it presents the general fund's expenditures by major function. Um, expenditures totaled around seventy-nine point nine million, uh, which was an increase of about ten million dollars compared to FY twenty-two. Uh, you know, again, as you would expect, public safety, uh, it, it represents the majority of these expenditures. Public safety was around forty-five point seven million, um, and it accounted for around fifty-seven percent of the general fund's total expenditures. Uh, general government expenditures around twelve point two million, and you all had judicial expenditures of about seven point seven million for the year. Uh, so in total, the general fund's, uh, fund balance increased by approximately six point seven million, uh, for an ending fund balance of fifty-eight point six million for the year. Uh, this next slide is, 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 is very interesting to me. It, it shows the fund balance history of the general fund, um, over the past five years. And, and again, it's, uh, slides such as these, uh, again, are always interesting, um, to, you know, to, again, to kind of reflect back on where you were, uh, compared to where things currently stand. But, uh, you know, as you can see, you all have done a really good job of increasing your fund balance, especially the past three years. Uh, so that's certainly something that, uh, the, the entire county should be proud of and committed for. You know, again, as, as I've mentioned before, um, similar to net position at the government-wide level, one thing I always like to remind people is, is it pertains to fund balance. This isn't what you all have in the form of cash. Again, fund balance is merely the difference between assets and liabilities, only a portion of which is, is, is cash on hand. Um, additionally, another thing to keep in mind, the general fund incurs expenditures of approximately six point seven million dollars per month. Uh, so you all ended the year, uh, with an unassigned fund balance equal to around nine months' worth of operating expenditures. That's strong, uh, that's, that's, that's something you all should be proud of. Um, but with that being said, with you all being a June thirty year in, that strong fund balance is very much needed, uh, to, to get you through the months of July through November, um, when your, when your revenues are typically down, uh, compared to other, other times of the year. But again, um, as I said before, this, this chart really says a lot, especially, uh, you know, how it's increased over the last three years. So congratulations to you all on that. Uh, a couple of other funds I just wanna briefly mention are the county's two major enterprise funds, which, again, are your water fund and your solid waste fund. Um, enterprise funds, they're used to account for operations and to manage some of that of a private sector business. Um, you know, the intent of these funds is to be self-sufficient and to generate, um, again, sufficient operating revenues to cover your operating expenses. So as you can see on this chart, uh, it, it compares your operating revenues and expenses for each of these two funds. Um, but as you can see, both of these funds generated operating income this year and generated positive operating cash flows. Uh, so again, that's, that's certainly something you wanna see out of your enterprise funds. Uh, one final item, uh, to discuss, again, is just certain information that the auditing standards require that we communicate to you all. Uh, with you all receiving a clean opinion and no audit findings, uh, the information on this slide is, is essentially formality, but, uh, we received full cooperation from county management staff. Uh, there were no disagreements with management that would have affected the financial statements. Um, there were no uncorrectiveness statements, and again, we are independent of the county as required by governmental auditing standards. And with that, um, unless anybody has any questions, that concludes my presentation. But, uh, as you could see, when you looked at your financial statements, there's a lot, there's obviously a lot of information in that report. Uh, what I tried to do is just, uh, uh, just break it down and, and provide you a, a, a synopsis of what I think is of most importance to you all. Um, but again, if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to address those at this time. But, uh, before I close, I, I do just wanna thank your staff again for all their hard work and... and we, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to be of service to you all and look forward to, to working with you in the future.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, I mean, any questions, commissioners? Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you so much for this extensive report. I really appreciate it. Going back to where you stated our private sectors, with the solid waste and the water authority, you mentioned about them possibly being able to function on, operate on their own. Can you expound upon that a little bit?
Well, again, the, 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 the purpose of your enterprise funds is to, is to generate sufficient operating revenues to cover your operating expenses and not have to rely on transfers from other funds. And again, your, your solid waste fund, it still has a significant deficit in net position. But this, what this chart tried to do is just show that, at least in this year, and I believe it was the prior year as well, these funds are generating sufficient operating revenues to cover their operating expenses. Now again, there's some non-operating expenses that aren't included in this slide, such as interest expense, that, that brings this down. But again, from an operations standpoint, both of these funds are generating operating income.
They can function on their own. Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, thank you for this report, by the way. Very well put together. So you mentioned early on a decrease in our net position, and you said why? What, from last year to this year? And what, what was that again?
It was your, your investment in your joint venture. But again, that's only the entity-wide level. Your, your investment in your, in your joint venture, that's only recorded, it's not recorded in any of the funds. It's only recorded at the entity-wide level. So you, you only see, from a financial reporting standpoint, you'll only see it once during the year, and that's within these financial statements. You know, in, in the, in the day-to-day, month-to-month activities of the, of the county, the, the focus again is on the, the, the individual funds themselves, which, which that, that investment, that, that, that investment, that joint venture is not included within your funds. So again, that's just, that's merely a, a government-wide financial reporting adjustment.
I got you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. C. My, first of all, thank you. That was very impressive. Just a little information for us, especially for me. My question is this, is that you said there was nine months, we had nine months of operational expense, you know, of fund balance. And so what is the typical amount of fund balance that county our size should have?
Well, there, there's no right or wrong answer. It, it does depend on your year-end, with you all being a June 30 year-end and, and a significant portion of your revenue for your general fund coming from your property taxes, which again is collected in November, December. You, you need a, a larger fund balance as of June 30. And, and so, you know, it's, there's no definitive answer to your question. It really depends on a variety of factors. But nine months for a June 30 year-end is, I would say, is strong. Ideally, you would want anywhere between four to six months, but, but nine months is, is, is really, is really impressive.
I had been told, I guess, by other auditors, that we need, we needed about 10%, 10 to 15, and 20% of excess cash in order to, for an emergency, to give that shortfall in those months where we're not taking in quite as much money.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's kind of on the lower end, a- a- again, with you all being a June 30 year-end. But where you're at is, 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 to me, is where you need to be.
Okay, so, so we got about, I think, $40 million, I think that's what I've been told, maybe I'm around $40 million of fund balance cash at this.
Well, again, fund balance isn't what you have in the form of cash. I, I don't have with me the, the amount of cash you have on hand in the general fund as of year-end. But again, fund balance is just the difference between assets and liabilities, only a portion of which is cash.
And I understand that. And all they, what I'm saying is, is that I think it's, at some point, we need to stop continually putting more and more money into fund balance. If this is the amount of cash that we need where we're at now, then we need to say, we're going to cap this right now and take the other money that's, monies that they may be taking in and maybe want to put into fund balance, taking and spending on some of the, some of our citizens and projects and stuff that we so desperately need here in, in Newton County.
Well, a- again, as your auditor, that's, that's not something I can, I can sit here and suggest that you all do. There, there are advantages for having a fund balance, you know, as we've seen the past 15 years. We've seen the, the economic crisis, the economic downturn in '08, '09, we had the, the global pandemic in '19 and '20, and just anything that can come up, whether it be weather-related, this, that, and the other. You, you never know when you're going to need those funds. It always, it also improves your bond rating, having a stronger fund balance. So there's, there's certainly, there, there's no right or wrong answer in, in how much months' fund balance you should have in your general fund. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors that come into play there. But just a broad overview in looking at your financial statements and looking at your, your, your financial activity, it, it's, it's a good fund balance, it's a strong fund balance. But again, that, that fund balance is needed, essentially, especially to get you through the months of, of July through December.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you, sir, for being here tonight. Brittany, thank you, guys. You do, you always do a great job. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Thank you, guys, for leading the way in this, and thank this board for making the decisions that need to be made to get us where we are now. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Cooper, turning it back over to you.
That concludes my county manager's report, sir.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanders.
I want to congratulate you on the event this weekend for bringing it here. I just want to shout out the Grandland State University softball team, which you did not mention that won a lot of games this weekend. But I also would like, I did speak to Ms. Edwards, and find out that her family lives in District Three, because I wanted to know why she came to Newton County. So her partners and family live in the county, which is why they brought the HBCU event here, and I'm looking forward to having it again every year. And hopefully, we can do more advertising in the community, because I got almost talked about with my Grandland State University alumni. They didn't know about the event. So some of them did come on Sunday at the last minute, but they would have probably packed up Newton County if they knew about it.
Commissioners, I seek a motion that we approve the consent agenda, please.
Go move.
Can I get a second? Is it motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards? Any discussion? All in favor? It passes 5-0. Next on the agenda is the finance report. Ms. Brittany, if you would, please come on up. We greatly appreciate, I know your, your office is an award-winning office, all the hard work that you guys do and all the time that you spend making this thing happen, so we greatly appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, our audit is, it's a six-month process for sure, but it's really an annual process, because without the correct posting and reconciliation of my staff, then the year-end closeout wouldn't be near as easy as it is, so my staff does a great job. Tonight, I will be presenting the January 2024 financials, so January is the seventh year, or seventh month of our fiscal year. So I'll start with our general fund revenues. So seven months puts us about 58% into our fiscal year. So at this point in the year, our revenues are at 78.6%. That is pretty typical for this time of the year, because most of our tax revenue does come in through property taxes, and at this point, we've seen a bulk of our property taxes collected. So this is a graph that just shows the amount per month that's collected in revenue. So you can see our heavy months are generally November and January that correspond with our tax due dates. And the graph below also just shows the actuals to, on year-to-date budgeted. So for our general fund expenditures, to date, we've spent six, or $46.7 million. The current month was $6.3 million, so that puts us roughly around 51% in our actual to budget in our expenses. So this graph just shows our monthly amounts per. So you can see, as the auditor mentioned, our general fund revenues are roughly around six to $6.5 million per year, and we're continuing on that track again this year. So for our general fund revenues, our revenue to date is $72 million, and our expenditures to date are $46.7 million. So at this point, our revenues are $25.3 million over, but we will see that go down as we go throughout the year. So for our three enterprise funds, we have this water fund. Their revenue actual to date is $5.1 million, their expenses to date are $3.2 million. Our solid waste fund, their revenue to date is $4.5 million, expenses to date is $2.8 million. And for Gaithers and Factory Shoals, their revenue to date is $104,000, and expenses to date is $127,000. So we have three current SPOLOs. We're currently working on closing out the 2011 SPOLOs, so the only project left there is the historic jail, and we have $934,000 remaining to spend there. So we have the 2017 SPOLOs that is also currently active, several of these projects are ongoing, and we have $32.7 million remaining in that fund. Our 2023 SPOLOs, we have mostly the bonded projects and the tier-one projects going there. Our current cash balance there is $2 million, but we do have those bonded funds that we draw down on. Our SPOLOs collections to date for 2023 SPOLOs for December, we brought in $2.1 million, which is the highest month that we've had, but that is pretty typical for December with Christmas shopping and the holiday shopping season. So at this point in our 2023 SPOLOs, we brought in $2.3 million over what our projection was. And then for the impact fee funds, we currently have $3.4 million in that fund. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Brittany. Any questions, guys? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is update on the ARPA programming. Ms. Kennedy Shannon is here tonight. If you would, please come on up. Thank you for being here tonight.
Hello, hello. Long time no see.
Welcome back.
All right, so, um, tonight I wanted to come and give an update on mainly the senior home repair program. So as of Friday of last week, we have exhausted all of our funding. I'm going to give you the numbers of what it looks like, well, what we've been able to help to date, and what we currently still have open. So we've assisted 275 senior households with an average grant amount of $17,526.48. Of that 275, 122 projects are fully completed. We've got 39 applications that are pending inspection from the county's inspector to go out, so we can release final payment. We've got 153 projects that are still in progress. So what that means is they may have one project completed, but may have another project open, or they may have multiple projects that are open and we're waiting completion for those. Applications that we denied were 185 applications. These were individuals who were deemed to be over income, over the 50% target income area. And we have 385 applications still pending. So as of now, because we are out of money, those 385 individuals will receive a notice to let them know that we've run out of funding. So we kind of knew this going in, just the sheer number of applications that we had were well over 800 applications. There was never enough funding to, to fund all of those applications. But I think overall, with that average of $17,000 a grant, I think that's amazing. I know we originally had talked about a $15,000 cap, and we made it $30,000, but even with that $30,000 cap, we were able to have that average of $17,526.48. Now what that means is obviously some seniors got the full amount, depending on the need and what they were able to express, while others didn't get the full amount, because they didn't have that need. Projects ran the gamut from HVAC systems to roofs to bathroom shower installs. Unfortunately, there are going to be a number of seniors that are going to be disappointed because we weren't able to get to their projects in time before the funding went out. We do have $100,000 in reserve, and we're keeping that $100,000 because we've seen that projects are running over sometimes. So say, for instance, we approve a roof, they tear the roof off, they find additional damage, they come back and say, we need an additional $2,000 to fix that. Because we have 153 projects still out there, we thought we needed to keep some money to the side, because if we don't and we expend that money, any additional cost will be bore by the senior, and we don't think that that's fair. That being said, once all the projects are closed out, any remaining money out of that $100,000 will obviously go back to the county. But we anticipate, just looking at some of the overages that we've seen, that that $100,000 will be eaten up in additional. I mean, just last week, we had four additional requests for funding from finding mold behind the wall after they went in the wall, to redo a bathroom, to finding fire damage under a roof that they didn't know was existing that they needed to repair. So obviously, those things have to be fixed in order to complete the project, so we, we thought it was prudent to keep a certain amount of money over to the side to make sure that that's covered. Overall, we would have spent $4,819,782.52. That, that, once you add that $100,000 that we're holding to the side, it'll be $4.919. The other money that's missing from that out of the $5 million went to Family Connect, purchase the laptop computers, all the other expenses that were associated with the senior home repair that were outside of IPAR metrics that came out of that $5 million that you all allocated. So that's kind of where we are with senior home repair. We will provide a final report once all of these projects are closed out. It'll be a very detailed report. It'll have before and after pictures, it'll have testimonials. There'll be a section in what we learned from this program, what we could do better from this program. And it'll be very detailed, and we'll get that to you, but we wanted to wait until all of the projects were completed before we had an opportunity to get that report. So that being said, are there any questions about what I've presented thus far?
Thank you. Any questions, guys? Any questions? Commissioner Sanders.
I have a question about the ARPA. We put in with $100,000 or $200,000 for mental health. Have you received any contacts for anyone? I know they've been emailing the county, mental health therapists and so forth. I know we had that money sitting there for behavioral health, mental health, dealing with our public safety, getting them trained and all of that stuff. Have you heard anything?
I have not. I've not heard any more movement on that. I don't think you all have changed that budgeted amount. I know we changed the budget a few times, but I thought we kept some money in that line item.
It was like $100,000 or $200,000.
I think so. But yeah, we've not done any programming on that line item.
And it has to be allocated by the end of this year, right?
It's got to be obligated by December 31st of 2024. So by December 31st, we need to find somewhere to put that money, some organization to put that money towards, if we're going to keep it in that mental health line item.
There, there were many mental health organizations that contacted county, and also some of that was, was based on the vote, was supposed to go with training our sheriff department on how to deal with mental health constituents. So I, I would love to see that movement, because we did adopt mental health as a crisis here in Newton County, so we do need to make that movement.
I think the last that I remember on that front was that we were going to check with the sheriff's office to see what that would look like liability-wise, having a social worker ride along with the police officer for calls that they thought met the threshold of being, you know, a mental health call. I don't, I have not received any additional information on what that looks like, but, I mean...
There's counties that already do it. There's, there's actually a structure of how it's done. Phoenix, Arizona, there's many counties that do it.
Yeah, we do it in Detroit, so it, it can be done. It's just getting the sheriff's office on board of what that looks like, and then being okay with it, and, because obviously, they, the sheriffs got to okay it, because they got to ride along with them, but the money's there.
He asked me about it, but I don't know, that, I'm not operations, I don't know if him and the county manager have had a discussion. He did ask me about it.
Gotcha.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for this report. We appreciate the updates. Do you have in your recording the amount of monies that we gave to Viewpoint Health?
So... I don't have it broken down for Viewpoint Health, but I'm looking at what Brittany provided to me. Willing Helpers, Viewpoint, and Rainbow Community got a total of $1.1 million.
Okay. Because to my understanding, I thought that the money that we gave to Viewpoint Health...
Was health-related.
Was mental health-related, so I don't re- ever recall there being a separate mental health budget or line item. Is that...
So I think I do recall there being a line item for the police mental health program. It was like $100,000 that we thought about. I think we left that there, because we wanted the sheriff to come back to let us know how, one, if that was enough money, for one. And two, how feasible it would be liability-wise for that to happen. That's my last remembrance of what it was, but you, you are correct in that Viewpoint Health was mental health services that... That's my last remembrance of what it was, but you you are correct in that viewpoint health was mental health services that we awarded.
So the amount that you're referring to, the hundred thousand, is just going to be towards police? It's not giving to towards any other nonprofit mental health organizations, is that correct?
That it was targeted towards a partnership with the police.
Okay, so not so that we, that line item for mental health.
It's not just open for anybody.
That is correct, so it is supposed to be whatever we have left for mental health is supposed to be just for the police and not for any other nonprofits that uh do mental health work to be able to receive any of those funds, is that correct?
Correct, that's my understanding.
Okay, I just wanted to provide a level of clarity.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sanders, again, Commissioner.
If you can, just go ahead and um or maybe our county clerk can pull those records because it does say mental health and organizations. We actually voted for it, it's on tape. So one of the things that we talked about was the possibility of working those various organizations that I'm speaking of work with the sheriff. They work with them in accountability court. And actually this line item came from our former accountability court, Robert Fox. This is where it came from. And so all of that is in place and they work with all of these entities, these nonprofit partners to provide that service with mental health that also deals with the sheriff office. And then we all know going to Naco and ACCG, you have nonprofit partners that deal with certain specters of the government.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Miss C. Ms. Kennedy, uh, you know, normally, you know, and you say we're trying to get ready to close out the um the uh the help to our seniors, senior home repair. And typically when you in a a program, you normally have a, and you said that you want to learn about um about the programs and how people felt. So how how will you, how will you kind of, I guess, find out out of the hundred and thirty eight? I think you said something like there are people who won't get their home repaired. So how can they come, are they supposed to continuously call me here at home? Or are they going to call, are you going to help? Some kind of window open so that they can kind of vent their frustration in them maybe not receiving it. I thought once we had a committee between you, the county manager, and the and the attorney. Whereas people who would turn down for whatever reason, they could appeal and talk you through the process. And so they could kind of get more information on the reason why they were turned down. So is that, is that still going on?
Yes, so we, the appeals committee has met every time we've had an appeal. The the denials that are going to go out for the three hundred and eighty five individuals, that's because we've exhausted funding. There really is no appeal to that other than we need to find additional funding. The hundred and eighty five individuals who were denied were based on denial of income and they had a right to appeal. Some of them did appeal, others chose not to appeal. The other appeal rights extended to those contractors. We had some contractors who were deemed to be ineligible to work with the program. The reason those contractors were deemed to be ineligible because it was either bid rigging or they were non-responsive. Meaning they had put an estimate into a senior, we called them to give them a contract, they never called us back. We called them, they never called us back. It was holding up the project, so we finally told the senior they needed to go and find a different contractor. For bid rigging, all of the contractors had a right to appeal and we had a number of contractors come before the appeal committee. And Patrick and a county manager, Cooper and myself, and there was a citizen member on that committee. And we heard those appeals and made decisions based on those appeals. Every every contractor had a right to appeal, some chose not to, others did. And when they appealed, we took it to the committee and the committee made the decision on what that process was going to be. But to answer your question, we do plan on doing a survey. This will be a survey that will be shot to every single applicant and it will ask them about their experience. Obviously, we're going to get some negative responses for those who weren't funded, we expect that. But we do want to know about the process. No process is perfect, IP parametrics knows that, you all know that. What we can learn from this project is how we could have done this project better. But overall, we assisted two hundred and seventy five senior households with household repairs that were necessary to their health and safety. I want to reiterate, the purpose of this funding was to address health and safety. This money is COVID nineteen money. The way I was able to even tie this back to COVID nineteen is during another pandemic, where are you going to be? Home, you're going to be sheltering in place. We could not have seniors sheltering in homes that were not safe for their habitation. Thus, we have this program, we had seniors that were asking for things where we could make that argument that it was a health and safety issue. Some of them wanted new kitchen cabinets, some of them wanted granite countertops. I understand the want, but there was no health and safety requirement attached to that. And so those those repairs were denied. And those that did demonstrate a health and safety uh issue, they were approved. That is a very hard decision to make, to tell one person they can get money and another they can't. But that's the role of IP parametrics in making that determination and we took very good case notes and made very good cases as to why that is. The other thing I want to express to you all so that you understand, we are not a party to these contracts. Seniors go out and get two contractors. We tell them you have to go with the lowest contractor. The senior signs that contract with that contractor. The county is not a party to that contract, we don't want to be. Because had we been a party to that contract, the county would have had to RFP all of those contractors. So all we are are the fiduciary, we make the payment on behalf of the applicant. Now what happens when there's a disagreement between the applicant and the contractor? I'm peacemaker, that's all I can be. I talk to the applicant, I talk to the contractor. What can we do to come up with a happy medium so that the contractor is happy and I can pay him and the homeowner is happy and I can pay them? My hands are tied to an extent because if the work is completed and your inspector goes out and says the work is completed, I've got to pay that contractor. I cannot withhold payment to that contractor if they've done the work that they were contracted for. Now there may be disagreements between the homeowners of, well, I didn't want it that way, or I don't like the way that it looks. That's not a valid reason for us not to pay contractors because what can happen then is that contractor can put a lien on that individual's house. Because the contract is between the homeowner and the contractor, county's not a member of that contract. So a lot of times when you have disgruntled applicants that are not happy with the workmanship, that happens to everybody, right? You hire a contractor, they come in, they do the work and they do crappy work. What are you doing in that regard, right? You try to fight back and forth with the contractor, say, hey, you need to come and get this done. We are using what leverage we have by holding that second payment to these contractors to get them back out to fix these things. Overall, we've been very, I I would say overall ninety five percent of the projects have not had an issue. We have had five percent projects where individuals have not been happy with the work that the contractors have provided. Or a contractor has come out and bid a job, they've got the job and sent a whole nother crew to do the work. So this senior is thinking, you know, Mr. Johnson who came out and gave me my estimate is who's going to come out and do the work. Well, Mr. Johnson sends a crew and these are people they've never met before, they didn't come and do the estimate. So they're calling us saying, you sent somebody else that we didn't pick. No, it's the same company, they just work for that company. So, you know, again, because we're not parties to that contract, our hands are tied in what we can and can't do. I will always call and advocate on behalf of the applicants because this is their program. But my hands are tied when our county inspectors go out and say, the work's done. You know, you may not like the color of the shower, but the towel is laid and I got to pay him for the work that he did, so. I just wanted to explain those nuances for some of the programs.
Well, my second question is that um. It was my understanding from some people saying that that we, under the senior home repair, they went out and we repaired uh rentals, their homes, some of the homes that were rental home. Did you, did we do any of that?
Everybody had to show proof that this was their primary resident. We asked for a utility bill and we asked for a driver's license. So if somebody's, you know, slipped through and said that this was their primary resident, obviously we didn't go out and knock on everybody's door and made sure that they live there. We can only go by what the documentation substantiated. Now, if you're familiar with individual applicants who lied on their application, therein lies a problem because they lied on a federal application for a federal grant. And that's a horse of a different color.
Absolutely, and and so some told me, and like you said, I didn't go and knock on the door and go out and physically look at it. They told me that be because of the low standard of just the address and a driver's license that we were actually repairing some rental property too as well. So I don't know um how somebody might um check into it or if we want to check into it.
And lastly. We we also asked for a copy of the deed, so the deed had to be in the individual's name. And then we also checked the online records for Newton County to show who the registered owner for that property was. The deed and that system had to match. So if you show me a deed, you show me a driver's license with that address on it and you show me a utility bill. Then you tell me and you assert in that application that this is your primary residence, that's really all we can go off of.
My last, my last question is how much of the uh, what was the commission saying, twenty one million? I mean, all together, the amount of money.
Total twenty one point eight million.
Twenty one point eight million, how much? Thank you. Well, yeah, okay. How much um the IP parametric, how much they make from those, I mean, from that amount of money for y'all's services for the citizens of Newton County?
One million forty dollars. So five percent, a little less than five percent.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I wanted to take the liberty or take the opportunity to go back and look at the actual email that you sent to us back on July the twentieth of two thousand and twenty three that actually shows the complete spreadsheet uh that we voted on. And of course, we talked about supporting public health expenditures, addressing negative economic impacts caused by COVID nineteen pandemic. Water, sewer and broadband infrastructure, premium pay for essential workers. Of course, the amount that we would pay our our IP parametrics. As well as revenue recovery projects that we actually talked about funding as well with these ARPA funds. And so when I look at this that you sent to us back on July the twentieth of two thousand and twenty three. We do have a line item for COVID vaccination incentive program, COVID incentive program, marketing and promotion. As well as law enforcement, mental health program. But when you look at this spreadsheet, those three line items were completely blank. So we never actually allocated funds for those. Now it says we have a total of twenty one million, seven hundred and four, nine hundred and sixty two dollars to be exact, which is the amount of ARPA funds that we received. As of July the twentieth, two thousand and twenty three, we had already allocated twenty million, three hundred and fifty eight and thirty five dollars and fifty seven cents, which we did not allocate. In that twenty million uh that we have already allocated, when you look at the spreadsheet, those three line items for uh COVID vaccination incentive program, COVID incentive program, marketing and promotion, law enforcement, mental health program. Those three line items are completely blank. So we may have voted on it to say, yes, we wanted to put money to those specific areas. But we never put monies in those specific three line items. Uh, and as of that time, uh, we had one million, three hundred and forty six, uh, thousand, nine hundred and twenty six dollars and forty three cents remaining. Which I'm not sure if we've allocated those amount as of yet, but as of July the twentieth, we did not allocate any funds towards the uh mental health, the law enforcement, mental health program. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I'm glad you brought that up because now you're jogging my memory. We originally had obligated funding, but then we decided to move that funding back into the pot. Because remember, we talked about, uh, at that time, we had reached out to the health department and they said that there was no need to offer COVID incentives at that point in time. Because people who were going to get the the vaccine were going to get it and fifty dollars wouldn't go change their mind. And I think we ended up putting those three line items back into the bucket and saying we would revisit it at a later date if we wanted to then fund it.
But it wasn't a vote, yeah.
So I just wanted to put that on the record that yes, we may have added that or said that that was a line item that we wanted to address. But as of July twentieth, two thousand and twenty three.
It wasn't obligated.
There was no funds allocated towards that particular program. And as a matter of fact, this spreadsheet says that viewpoint mental health received four hundred thousand dollars.
That's it, that's how much they got.
So that is what they received and that is kind of what we utilize to help address that mental health concern here in Newton County. So I just want to put that on record and specify that that is actually what this board did. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you so much, Mr. Shee. Commissioner Mason, if you don't want to support mental health in the sheriff office, we don't have to, it's not that serious. But we did actually do an actual vote, we can get that from our county clerk, it would be in 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 session. We actually did a resolution to support our residents. Mental health, uh, viewpoint health is an actual facility. And if you actually go to viewpoint health, it doesn't support all age limits. It also does not support our sheriffs and our deputies going out to fight and have training for our mental illness constituents. So that's what it's set for. We actually had meetings at Naco recently, you sat there, them talking about mental health and helping our constituency and making sure that law enforcement can have the tools they need versus when they see someone have a episode, they don't think that they are acting out. That's what it's about. It's not about giving it to a building, it's making sure that our law enforcement is equipped to handle the situation. Now, if you're against it, that's on you, I can't I can't force you to do that. But going into the bid rigging, can you mention some of the things that happened or what are some of the cases of bid rigging?
So we had scenarios where, um, and I'm not going to mention any contractors' names, but a contractor submitted an estimate. Then the homeowner submitted another estimate, the second estimate, but it they inadvertently left the contract, the original contractor's email on top of the second estimate. So you can see where that estimate was actually invoiced by the first contractor. And when you look at the templates, they're the exact same, that all they did was change the company name at the top. And obviously one is thirty thousand dollars while one is, you know, twenty nine thousand, five hundred. And the one contractors was obviously the lowest one. We also had a scenario where we had an invoice that was submitted and it just looked funny. So our, we called the contractor and said, hey, you know, we want to ask you about a a a proposal, you went out and did a quote. I've never been to that house, I've never provided a quote. Come to find out, I asked him, hey, do you know this other contractor? Yeah, I know him. He submitted the the secondary quote using his friend's company, but obviously didn't tell his friend and his friend had never been out there. We had another situation where the contractor pretty much admitted on the phone that um he got his brother to write an estimate. His brother had never been out to the property and he thought that that was okay. We explained to him that it wasn't, this was a federal program, it needed to be separate. He agreed that he would remove himself and his brother's company um out of running for that. We did have a number of applicants that were affected by that. So if we found an application that had a barred contractor, we contacted that applicant and said, unfortunately, you have to find another contractor. And we gave them time to do that. But obviously, we want to make sure that this program is very, it's it's competitive. And as a federal program, you have to have two separate estimates. You can't have contractors in cahoots and having conversations amongst each other and submitting two estimates to guarantee work goes to one contractor. So whenever we were able to identify that, we gave, we sent the letter to the contractor saying, you know, we have reason to believe that this is a a product of bid rigging. You have a right to appeal. Some contractors appeal and they gave us their spiel about what happened and I gave it to the committee and we listened to it and we made a decision. And we voted whether or not to believe them or not to believe them based on the evidence that was provided. So they had a right of due process, everybody always has a right of due process, contractors as well as applicants. And so those were some examples of some of the bid rigging. There were only a few contractors that we removed for non um for being non-communative, so not responding back. We had another contractor who called and said he wanted to remove himself from the program, he had, he had had too much work, he couldn't get any more jobs. And so a lot of these contractors kind of wore themselves thin because there's money out there, right? And not only did this help seniors, but this also helped our contractor community. This could very well have been a contractor program as much as it was for senior home repair because you were able to stimulate that economy for Newton County. And those contractors did very well in this program. So those were some of the examples of bid rigging. But if there's any contractor who felt that he was denied access to do the work, he all, he or she always had a right to appeal. And we always presented that information to the appeals committee.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you.
Before you do that, let me just say this because I think I already know where you're going. So uh, viewpoint helped, um, I I sit on the board of directors for viewpoint help and we do service all ages. We specialize in people, we specialize in people who um can't can't afford insurance, that's what viewpoint help does. But Commissioner Mason, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify, um, it it is historically known for the past three years that sometimes negative narratives are put out there on people. And uh, I want to make sure that I address. Uh, and, uh, I want to make sure that I address the negative narrative that has just been stated. Uh, me personally, as an individual, uh, as a matter of fact, I support mental health. If you go back and look at our video back in December, uh, we provided a resolution, and we gave a resolution, uh, to a mental health professional who has been in this industry for well over twenty-plus years, sits on the state and national board for NAMI, uh, which is, uh, the National Association of Mental Institute. I always get their acronym incorrect, but they deal with mental health. Uh, as a matter of fact, I'm working with that individual, uh, working with that doctor. Uh, to start a mental health initiative here in Newton County, uh, we are actually in the process of launching that mental health initiative as well. So I, I, I wanted to be put out there that I highly support mental health. As a matter of fact, the mental health initiative that I'm currently working on will address those individuals in the jail. It will also address those, uh, children that are in our school system, that are, uh, on our unsheltered, that have mental health concerns. So it will address all of those mental health concerns that we need. I, I want our community to understand as well. The American Rescue Plan Act funds was a one-time fund.
That's right.
It is not the solve-all-in-all. Just because we don't have funds to do everything in the entire county does not mean that we will never get funds from anywhere else. There are other resources and sources out there for funding uh, that we as a board should be able to look into to where we can actually get additional fundings for mental health. We can get, get additional fundings possibly to start another senior, senior home repair that's outside of ARPA funds. So I want this board and our community to understand that ARPA is not the end-all, solve-all. And if someone just did not get an opportunity to take advantage of those funds, it does not mean that this board cannot find a creative way to find other funds to possibly do some additional programs. We've just got to think outside of the box and look at other options and look at other opportunities and find other ways of funding so that we can continue to do this work. This was just the beginning. It's not the end. And so just because we have ran out of that twenty-one million dollars does not mean, oh, we can never do these type of programs. We can never support mental health. We can never support our seniors because we don't have any more ARPA funds. We can find other resources. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And to your point, uh, we recently met with County Manager Cooper about grant initiatives, and mental health was on that list, as well as any other grants that we think would benefit the county. So, and we will be able to use these ARPA programs as pilots to say to a federal funder of another grant source, look what we were able to do with ARPA funding. We were able to take four-point-eight million dollars and assist two-hundred-and-seventy-five, you know, low-income seniors with health and safety issues in their home. Give us more money because there's clearly additional need in the community, and we can use that to leverage additional fundings via grants.
And I do want to add that, um, uh, because I do support mental health in the jail as well, what I was saying was, is that this board just did not allocate funds towards that specific line item. Not that anyone on this board doesn't, uh, support mental health in the jail. We support mental health in the jail, but this board just decided not to put any monies in that specific line item. Now, if we had have put monies in that specific line item, then it would show on that particular document that I stated. But this board didn't put monies in that line item. And so I wanted to make sure that people understood and knew that it's not Commissioner Mason that doesn't support mental health in the jail. He does. He's working on a mental health initiative right now that will support mental health in the jail. But we just didn't, as a board, put monies in that particular line item. So that was all I want to say. And other nonprofits, uh, that work with the jail, we can find ways to help those nonprofits if they are unable to take advantage of the ARPA funding.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Henderson. Y'all, we got to move on in a, in a second.
Because I got one more update, Nancy.
Going to be, I'm going to be brief. First of all, I just, you know, to our seniors, the ones who didn't get their home repaired, there are a hundred eighty-some people, and the ones who want to put in for it and it was turned down. I want to apologize personally to you because I think that, um, uh, we should have did, we should, we should have did better by our, by our seniors. I also want to just tell them that I care about you. I'm just not going to just throw you out in the wind and say that. And so if there's anyone who want me to, to continue documenting the, what the needs are in our community, and I'm going to work with, uh, Commissioner Sanders and to help and try and find grants so we can continue to help our seniors. And, and, or whatever we need to do, I wouldn't do it because I'm willing to go and, and, and put me a tent in front of Hank Johnson's office and say, well, hey, we need some grant money for our seniors or whomever I need to in order to make things happen for our seniors. Because, um, you are my top priority. And one last thing, I think when we get some more grant money, we need to look at, well, now we can run it in the house because I, I still say, and I said it, Ms. Kennedy, when we first did it, I think that a million dollars, that would have been, if we could have did in the house, we might have had close to a million dollars more that we could have did more for our seniors. Thank you, Mr. Sheehy.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Mason.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. One last point, uh, as we talk about the senior home repair. When you look at the, the allocations that we put, we put five million dollars.
Twenty-five percent of your ARPA.
That is correct. That is the most that we put in any specific line item in the ARPA program. So we put five million dollars. There's no other line item or no other program that we did that we put that much funds in. So the senior home repair was the, was priority. It was the most, and I think this board did a great job. Now, of course, we may not have been able to help every single person. And that's with anything. You may not be able to help everybody, but you want to try to help as many as you can. And so with that five million dollars, I think this board did a great job, along with our consulting staff, to really help as many people as we can. Like, we increased it from fifteen thousand to thirty thousand. So on an average, seven, each, those residents got seventeen thousand dollars worth done. And so we put a lot into that.
Y'all good? Oh, okay. No, hold, hold, no, 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 it's, no, 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 it's his time. Go ahead.
So we put the most of the ARPA funds in that specific line item than we did any other program.
Even more than what you spent internally in the county went to senior home repair, so.
That is correct. So I just want to put that on record that we did put five million dollars, and we didn't put five million dollars in any other program. So we, as a board, saw that as a priority, and we care about our seniors, and we wanted to do more, and we wish we could have done more. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. The other thing I want to talk about, um, youth facility. We gonna have to, to, to make a decision soon. That money is ticking. Um, and we've got to let HUD know what we're going to do. So I know we've discussed this before, but I just wanted to put that a bug in your ear. We got to make a decision with that, um, uh, either way. Um, the other grant that we're still waiting to hear, we, we got awarded, but because of obviously the, um, debt limit and, and Congress and what's going on, the nine hundred thousand for Brown Bridge Road, that will be approved once Congress approves the budget, which, which should be in March, assuming that they can all agree. Um, but that funding will be held up until that happens. Um, we did get the other funding for the, um, street safety plan. Um, we're looking for some grant funding for, uh, senior services, mental health. Housing was also on the list provided. Um, and we're looking at trying to get some community development block grant dollars, uh, into Newton County on the grant side.
Um, Commissioner Sanders.
I promise, Mr. Chair, I'll be quick. I just spoke to some state reps on Monday. The, um, Department of Community Affairs has a grant called Georgia Dream that's for housing, affordable housing that we should have known about, but we don't know about because they told us that every county should have known about this. And it's for affordable housing. So if you can look at that as well.
Yes.
That is available now, and they actually just started the application process. Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, thank you for being here tonight.
No problem.
Thank you so much, and thank you so much for the update. Thank you for all the hard work. Next, um, number ten, Mr. Patrick. You want to take this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So your agreement with iParametrics requires or calls for a fee to iParametrics in the amount of ten percent of all funds assigned to programs that are administered by iParametrics. As you well aware, because we just talked about it for the last little while, you have allocated a total of five million dollars to the senior home repair. The second part of the agreement that's important for me to remind you is each time you assign funds to programs administered by the i, by iParametrics, we have to amend that not-to-exceed number to account for that ten percent. We've not done that. So tonight's resolution is to amend the agreement to increase the not-to-exceed number to a total of ten million, or one million, forty thousand dollars to account for that additional five million dollars that they administer. So this is not increasing it beyond the million dollars. It's increasing it up to the million dollars. We've all, I think, assumed that that was already approved. It just hasn't been approved.
Let's get a motion on the floor, guys.
So moved by the county attorney.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Uh, any questions? Uh, Commissioner Sanders.
This would be to the county attorney. What was the eight hundred thousand we just increased? Probably about six, three, three or four months ago before twenty-twenty, was it twenty-twenty-three?
That was for that, that was for, I don't remember what all the programs were. Kennedy, Mike, that was the first bunch of new programs.
If you watched the video, we were told that was the final amount, the eight hundred thousand.
That was the final amount before you increased the five, before you increased.
We did all the increases during that time. We did all the increases. It was eight hundred thousand. Because the original was four, four, four hundred, that, four or five hundred. Then it went up to eight hundred thousand. And we were told that was the final amount. I mean, I watched, I go back and watch our videos. That's why I remember all of this.
We did a total of ten million dollars in direct programming, so that one percent, I mean, the ten percent fee for that is the million. I think it's forty thousand or something over it. What we didn't account for is, if you remember, if you recall, you, first you put a million dollars in senior home repair. Then you had another meeting, and you put two million dollars in senior home repair. And then the last meeting, you put five million dollars in senior home repair. Our fee did not keep up with you continuing to add those millions of dollars to the senior home repair. So this is the final one that takes into account the five million you had in senior home repair and the five million you had in all the other programs that we run for you.
Thank you. Um, thank, uh, thank Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Henderson, go ahead.
Once again, I want to just apologize to, to the seniors, our seniors, uh, for us giving away a whole lot of money uh, that could have been used for those, to help that hundred and some senior homes that need to be repaired. Uh, here had been suggested when we first started, why couldn't we do like the city of Covington? Why couldn't we have an in-house person to kind of handle that money with some accountants or whatever? Thank you. Or whatever to help it. But, you know, instead, we, you know, I, I just think myself personally that a million dollars is a lot of money. And, and we, even though we did good, I think it could have been more good if we did it. So, um, and I do want to address and hear the complaints of the people who didn't get their work done. So if anybody have a complaint and want their home documented so that we can make sure that whatever, if we can find some more grants or if we can budget a little bit of money every year budget so I can help those seniors until we get them all, or as many as we, more taken care of. Call me, seven-seven-oh-eight-nine-six, thirty-eight-twenty-six. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Patrick, this, this, uh, increase is to make us contract, contractually compliant. Is that correct?
That's correct. It will, it'll provide the compensation for the, for the increased senior home repair money that was administered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you so much. This is not going against Ms. Shannon, excuse me, Attorney Shannon. I do respect your title. But I had the opportunity to have our purchasing director to send me a copy of all of the companies who submitted for, as consultants, and some of them were at the a-million-dollar mark with the program. I read them in detail, and I asked that question from day one. As I said, it's hasn't against her. She just works for the company. I asked that question in day, from day one, was the five hundred thousand dollars the cap? I was told yes. Then we came back again, and we increased it to eight hundred thousand. Now we add one million when you had those different consultants who submitted for their bid at this price. And we're doing multiple change orders after change orders, which is Newton County getting known for is change orders. We're known for change orders. And so I asked that question. If you go back and watch the video, when we did the eight hundred thousand dollars, I asked, was this it? And people know, I look at finances, and I, we were told yes. And I, I would like for all the constituents to go back and look, watch that video for yourself as well. I was told yes. So I guess our county manager is stating now we have to pay additional amount, but we had consultants who submitted a bid at the same rate, and they were denied that bid.
I just wanted to do a point of clarity. So when we applied, we gave a price of four hundred thousand dollars. That did not include direct program administration. That was just consulting on ARPA funding for the twenty-one million dollar total. After the debacle with Salvation Army and the fraud that we uncovered to the tune of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars that came back into the coffers of the county, you all asked iParametrics to run these programs because you did not have a community partner that you trusted to run these programs. Obviously, that increased our cost because we had to hire people to do the program. So that's why the price changed. Had you not asked us to run these programs directly, our fee would have been the four hundred thousand dollars for the life of the grant for the twenty-one, whatever million dollars you all, odd numbers you got. I just want to make clarity.
And I'm glad you made that clarity because the reason why I said it had nothing to do with you, those other contractors had those programs in their bids because they were running them for other states. So they done ARPA already. They had those programs detailed in their bids at the million-dollar mark. So that's what I'm stating. I did not come against your, your company. It was mentioned in their bids.
I think what it shows, though, is that other companies bid it at a million dollars because that's what it would take to get all these programs done. So, you know.
Let's do this. Let's do this. All in favor? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Pass three, two. Uh, next on the agenda is, um, the final reading. District two, final reading.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the final reading for Shell Food Mart at fifty-eight-seventy Salem Road, Covington, Georgia, three-zero-zero-one-six, for Shenka, District two.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. End of discussion. All in favor? It passes five-oh. Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizens' comment. This opportunity will allow citizens to come up and make comments. You have three minutes to do so. If you would, please state your name, your address for the record, please.
My name is Howard Greer. I live at fifty-five River Show Court, Covington, Georgia. I would like to get a, or copy that report. The young lady came up to show all the money and all that stuff I was spent. And, uh, it's voting time. Stay in. Chairman, it's voting time.
That's right, brother.
And, uh, Mr. Mason, I believe you kind of need to listen a little bit what she was saying that about that, uh, money for that mental health. She was saying for the police officers and all them to get a little extra training. You, you kind of missed something. Like, you got something, something going on there. Anyway.
Any, anyone else? Anyone else?
Under Threat Nation here again to talk about, the last time I was here, you guys spent over a million dollars. But this time, we're going to talk about ignoring the citizen when we come to speak. Our words, they fall on deaf ear unless you guys are handing out money. Uh, somebody out and gave money to to give them praise. So that's the only time you guys listen to the people. And I'm going to give you a good example of that. We've been asking the county manager for a printout, uh, audit how this money is spent. We still haven't got it. I asked the chairman about putting these monitors on the wall so they won't be in the people's way out there in the audience so they can see, but they still on the floor. So that's how we know that you guys are not listening to us. And if you believe anything. And if you believe anything Ms. Kennedy say or the county manager say about ARPA, well, I got some sand in the desert to sell you in Saudi Arabia. And that's called, uh, some snake oil sale. And the other thing I wanted to speak on is the Salvation Army. When you guys gave the Salvation Army that money, did you guys ask for that money back or did they pay it back? We would like to know that. And these brackets here, not that expensive. Now, if you guys can go out here and spend a million dollars or plus every month, hang these monitors and get them off the floor and put them up on the wall so the people can see what's going on up here. And I think that's gonna be about it and stuff. Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you for listening. I know this gonna flow over your head, but like I said, most of the time when the people come up here to speak, you guys are not even listening to it. Y'all don't respect the people. But like I said, it's election time, Noon County. Get out and vote because you need to make a change about your leadership here because evidently they must not care about when you come up here and lessen you to put some money in their pocket or they to put something in your pocket. But the average citizen that come up here and complain to you guys, you guys are so disrespectful, you don't even listen to them. So I wish the citizen of Noon County would get out here and vote, vote your conscience and replace some of these people that's up here because they're not thinking about you. They putting the money in the special interest back pocket. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hello.
Hello.
How y'all doing?
Great.
Good. Um, I got a complaint. Mr. Bang, I don't stay far from you. I stay on Oak Hill Circle.
Great.
Yeah. And, um, when this program first came open about the senior repair home, the, yeah. I have, well, my mama passed in November. And I had brought all the paperwork, the deeds to the house, the driver license. I brought everything. But I got an email saying, well, Ms. Ruby Malone has been took off the list. Okay, that's fine because I emailed you, I'm being truthful. I emailed you to tell you that she had passed. But when I emailed you, you took my mama off the list. When you took my mama off the list, you took my daddy too. And when I emailed my caseworker about my mama, she asked for, um, more information about my dad and about my mama. And I told her, I said, I brought everything. I brought everything. She was like, um, well, we can't do anything about your application because you haven't submitted everything. I submitted everything, everything. Now I come today to ask about the situation again? They informed me, well, um, well, nobody name on the application but your mommas. How is that? Please make it make sense to me. If I brought you the deeds, my mom and dad been married 54 years. They lived in the same house, 54 years. So how can you take her name? Okay, it's fine if you took hers because she deceased. But you got my daddy's information. You got his social security number, you got everything, his bank statement. How can you take his name off the list? My daddy has dementia. I, speaking of mental health, I need some because I have to be up. I be up when my daddy wake up at 3 o'clock in the morning. I have to be up. I'm trying to make it safe for him to be where I can get rest so I can take care of him because I'm not putting him in no nursing home. No, I'm not. My daddy worked at Lathonian Lightning for 40 years and retired. So why he can't get no help? He ain't never, the government ain't never gave my dad a food stamp. My mama, nobody. So why they can't get no help around here in New County? We pay taxes. We pay them, so what's wrong? I see people every single day going to these places. They on section eight. They getting, they like be a pay, they getting a war to be a pay. What's going on?
Ma'am, so the way it works, you have, um, three minutes, um, to make your, your case.
I'm sorry, but it, I mean, I'm, I'm fed up. I'm, I'm fed up. I'm fed up. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Can you, can, can you give us your name, please, and your address?
My name is Trey Felton. And my dad's name is Charles Malone.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Frederick Johnson, 1036 Highway 162, Covington. Uh, you know, I normally, uh, try to look after some cemeteries and so forth. We're still planning on trying to do another one this year before the, before the trees put out, look like they fixing to start putting out pretty soon. Uh, if we can get enough help, I'll try to, well, I'll, I'll, I'll let the town, you know, you know, what cemetery I'll be, you know, working on. Um, was gonna do one, another one, uh, we did one on King's, King's birthday. Uh, it was in terrible shape, but we did what we could do with the help that we had. Uh, you know, have to, have to, uh, rely on volunteers. And I think Ms. Berchem, she always would help me out with tools and so forth and whatever else I need, uh, people, they will contact the schools and the colleges and try to get me, get me, uh, help from, from the students. So we're gonna be planning on, on, on that hopefully. And I just wanted to remind this board, May the 4th, 2021, this board voted to realign the project at Moat Road and Highway 162. I still want you to continue to remember that. Uh, I thank y'all, Ms. Calvin and Henderson for, uh, the work that they've put into our park, Spring Hill Park. It's coming along. Hopefully we'll be able to get some use out of it, uh, this summer. What else? I need the senior, the senior, uh, 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 repair. I was fortunate enough to get some help, you, you know. I had no trouble. Uh, just like the young lady said, I, I, I provided all the information they asked for. At the beginning, it looked, looked like it was a little bit slow because they didn't have the contractors in, in place. I in turn, uh, contacted Lowe's and Home Depot and got quotes, but they turned those down. But, but anyway, next time something like this happen, maybe we should, you know, make sure we get everything, you know, get our ducks in a row before we get started. And that, that way, you know, we won't have that, 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 that problem. Uh, I'm a retired contractor and I, I, I know that's where, where, where it goes. A lot of times, uh, you know, you, you do a bid, take a job, you have to serve it out because you, 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 you know, but you held responsible for it, you know? But anyway, let's, let's, uh, just continue to, uh, uh, keep the county moving. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
John Dobbs, Drive Han Row. I just have two things. These trash, put, paste cards or postcards or whatever you wanna call them. Why do they go up $5 a year when our county taxes go up? I don't understand. And the second thing I found out just a while ago, this board don't control the school board. But when the sheriff comes to y'all and say, I need 20 deputies to maintain, to pick deputies on the road. Tell him to get them out of the school system because the school system has their own police department. I just found out that a couple of days ago when I went and voted. I got a picture of a car. When the last time I was at the school board, I mentioned it to the school board. Everybody except for one, because he was absent, said, oh, we don't have a police department. Well, they've had a chief for two years. So the sheriff should be starting to pull some of the deputies out of the schools and telling the schools to get your people. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. Uh, uh, Mr. County Manager, if you would, I know Brittany has gone, pass along our congratulations to her. Um, a clean, a clean opinion from our auditors. Um, no audit findings for internal controls. And, uh, please congratulate her on, on my behalf. And, and, and just so the, uh, to, to pat the, my fellow members of the, the board on, on their back, nine months of operating expenses is, is exceptional. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Um, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to reiterate, um, what our county manager, um, discussed earlier about it, uh, being voting season. Uh, my 2024 presidential primary election is gonna be held on March the 12th. And so early voting has started, um, at Turner Lake Recreational Center, uh, Monday through Friday from 8 to 5. Prospect Church at Oak Hill, uh, 6752 Highway 212, Monday through Friday from 8 to 5. And then Life Point Church of the Nazarene, 5133 Jackson Highway, Monday through Friday from 8 to 5. Uh, Saturday voting on February the 24th and March the 2nd from 9 to 5. And then Sunday voting on February the 25th from 11 to 4. Uh, both of those Saturday and Sunday voting will take place at Turner Lake, uh, location only, uh, for Saturday and Sunday. So I just wanted to make everybody aware that, uh, this is gonna be for the 2024 presidential primary election. Uh, we will have another election that will be, uh, just for the, uh, local primary, state and federal, but this one is just for the presidential primary election only. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, and the last day to register the vote, um, well, actually that's passed already, February 12th. So it's already passed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sanders.
First, I wanna pay homage to the women who paved the way that it's Black History Month. Um, I wanna pay homage to Shirley Chisholm, who was our first African-American woman elected to United States Congress and the first African-American, African-American woman to receive the nomination for President of the United States. Ms. Barbara Jordan elected to the Texas State Senate as the first African-American to elect to the State Senate, as well as Michelle Obama, the first African-American female to be the First Lady of the White House. And as well as Kamala Harris, our first African-American Vice President, first female Vice President as well. So I wanna pay homage to those women who paved the way for offices and elected officials who actually paved the way for offices for us to be able to be upset in these seats. I wanna thank the constituents, uh, about us being able to travel to the various conferences. Why it's important for your elected officials to receive professional development and training? Because they receive information, as we spoke of, like grants. If I wasn't at NACO this weekend, I would have not got stopped by OSHA who handed me a paper and said, you need to immediately bring this back to your fire department because they have until May to respond. And then I brought that information back and lo and behold, our fire department did not even know about that information because we are one of the smaller counties and it's gonna cost us additional funding if we did not comply. As well as with the SBA, who also stopped me and said, your, your county communication has two years to comply with ADA to make sure their website is ADA. This is why your elected officials need to do professional development. We had the opportunity to meet with over 20 federal agencies who had grants, who had programs for our youth, which you will find out, I'll put that all in my newsletter and give to the, our, my colleagues as well, who had funding, who stated that we were leaving money on the table as Newton County. There is so much money out there that those other counties traveled with their grant writers. Rockdale County, as well as, uh, Chatham County had their grant writers with them. And when, and once they heard the grants, they were sitting there applying for the grants. These are counties that came together. IT team was there, the communications team, their entire team was at these, this conference applying for those grants. This is why education is so important for county officials and county on, at, at staff as well. Staff was there as well. It is important that we seek this education. We talk about grants, but we're not about grants. We talk about funding and not, uh, overtaxing the taxpayers, but we're not about it. Why? Because we're not doing it. But you look at the elected officials who are doing it and wanna seek the funding for our community going out and getting IE 4 million dollar grants, that is a problem. But the reason why we do that is because we go out and seek the research. Education is important and that's one thing nobody can take away from you. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. I just wanted, uh, to talk just a little bit about Ms. Dinawatt Pace, who, uh, who thawed enough of Noon County to bring, um, children orphanages. She was a slave and with, while being a slave, she helped the childrens in the, in, I guess, at the, at the big house. And so once she was freed, uh, they built a orphanage off, and off Dinawatt Pace Road. She found out and she, uh, she married Mr. Um, Mr. Pace because she was a Watts. And she had a very nice orphanage and, and helped train kids, graduated from Atlanta College. But just as soon as she died, guess what? They wouldn't even put a, or wouldn't, wouldn't allow for a plaque of any sort to be placed on the property. And she owned all the property at one point. And so I don't wanna forget about our seniors. I don't wanna forget about them because they did so much to make this county great and then all others. I don't wanna forget about them. And I think it's a disservice for us, for our seniors to forget about them when, when they're in need and when they're up in age. So I think as a board, we should come together. We need to fix that young lady's house who came up here about her daddy, Mr. Malone, because he did work all his whole life. He did a whole lot for this community. And when you go over to the historic areas that are still here, that are not closed, you can't get in, you see his picture of the young men who marched to the square on Black Easter, just trying to make a difference so that everybody could be remembered and be respected in their lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just be brief, uh, I just wanna say it's, um, it's good to see the Spring Hill Project coming along out there. Um, the chairman and I rode through there a few weeks ago and, uh, it's coming along really nice. And I think that, uh, the same thing can be said down the road when we get ready to do cousin's schools. So, uh, I just appreciate seeing things that come out of the ground like that. So I hope the community will be appreciative of that.
Thanks so much. I seek a motion that we adjourn, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and seconded by Commissioner, Commissioner Mason. All in favor? We stand adjourned.